Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the regular council meeting of the city of Nisswa. It is Wednesday, January 15th. It is 7:00 on the nose. Would you join me for the pledge of allegiance? And we will start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the consent calendar. And that is a summary of all the reports from the different departments and meetings from last month. Is there any questions or I would entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move the consent calendar.
Second. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Open forum. Is there anyone here in the public for open forum this evening?
Bob?
I don't speak out.
Nancy?
Hearing none, we will then move on to item C2, which is fire department presentation. We have Sean Bailey with us, the fire chief here this evening.
There's music to start.
Is there? We're moving up.
Were these pictures taken with the drone?
Alright, so our 2019 in review, our year. As you can see, well, we'll just move on. Here's our roster. So our leaders, myself, we've got Joe Hollis as assistant, Justin, Matt, and Nate as my captains. Currently, we have 25 on our roster. Keep in mind, four of those are only first responders. So we have truly 21 firefighters in Nisswa. Good news is, last night, we elected to take on three more, pending a background check and some other things. Public events that we participate in, we do our fishing derby on Nisswa Lake, which we're really nervous about this year. Fire awareness at the Nisswa Elementary School. We also do our annual open house at the fire hall. And Feed My Starving Children is something we started new this year. We invited all local fire departments, Pequot, Mission, and us. We went down there, and I think we did 33,000 meals. It was a good night. Yay. Haunted Barn, we do a Zimmerman's with Hay Ride. That's another fundraiser we do, and we donate that money all back to, I think this year was the Hockey Association and the Fort H Club. So that goes back out. Then our pancake breakfast. Our highlights of our year, obviously, is the big red fancy thing on the right. Thank you again for helping us along with this venture. Yes, we love it. We use it again today. Didn't want to, but we did. So we've been, it's been a busy day for us. The drone is on the left. It's a thermal imaging drone, so we can see anything that's hot in the woods. We got to participate in a wild, urban wildland searching rescue in Mission Township with the Mission firefighters. And they had hit two people on a 40-inch parcel. Within about 30 seconds of flight, we had them both, where they hit Sabre. Now, keep in mind, that's winter. There's no cover on the trees. Summer's a little more difficult. Slight fireworks. So training highlights, we had three live house burns this last year. We always do ice rescue, hazardous environment training, forcible entry, roof ventilation, emergency medical responder refreshers, pump operations and water supply, driver operations and vehicle education. You see that in my monthly reports. So that's basically what we do with training every year, or we did last year. 337 calls, hopefully responded to this year total. Don't focus on the numbers yet. It gets real the next level. So in Nisswa, had 181 calls for service, 133 medicals, 10 structure fires, six CO alarms, three vehicle fires, two gas leaks, one water rescue, 11 motor vehicle accidents, 11, excuse me, seven fire alarms, four brush fires, smoke detectors going off with six and one canceled and wrong. Lake Edwards had 105. We'll discover the medicals. That's what everybody seems to be. And Threesden has 83. And then Lake Shorehead, 51 calls for service, 42 medicals and 11 later. Our focus for '20, membership recruitment and retention, seems to be a big goal in the quality of our department organization. And ensure NFDC is current with innovations and technologies, which we are moving forward with a strong thing. It seems to be working for us. An increased focus on safety and situational awareness. That's our goal. That's the end of my presentation.
How are you sitting for first, since medical seem to be your number one right now? I mean, you seem to be going a lot of medicals. You guys sitting good with training and that for medicals? You don't need?
Yeah, we're doing pretty well.
And the first responders are the EMT level, paramedic level?
Oh, oh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have one medic, six or seven EMTs, and then everybody else is first responder trained.
Okay.
So there's an interesting dynamic happening now. North Ambulance is in town, if you didn't know it, 24 hours a day. They have two trucks on. Now, if the primary truck in Brainerd goes out, it leaves. But for the most part, there is an ambulance in Nisswa, 24 hours a day.
Are they housing at the fire department?
Yes, they are housing their firehouse.
How far over the area do these service?
North Ambulance.
Yeah. For, you know, that truck, that's it.
So how it works, they have a primary truck in Brainerd. They actually have two primary trucks in Brainerd. They don't make them sit at their quarters in Brainerd. One sits up here. It was from 7A to 7P. Now, they've realized they paid too much in overtime, so they put a second one on from 7P to 7A to save their overtime. So now, one's housed here, one's housed there. And they just intermingle. I'd say that this Nisswa truck's not going across, like, you can't say that, because they're moving these trucks all the time. You get a call, they reposition.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a, it's a good dynamic. The average, what we're seeing on first responder calls is four. Sometimes it's only me, sometimes it's six. Great. But depending on what it is, what we get.
So, you know, as I look at those numbers, Sean, it surprises me a little bit that Lake Edward has as many medicals.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, just any thoughts about that? I mean, would he?
Completely correct. So what is the average age of our area?
Getting older.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And over there, I think it's a little bit older than it is here.
Okay. So a lot of its age.
Age, yeah. A lot of its age. And people have problems, you know? You and I could have a problem as we're speaking, but, you know what I mean? We could just tip over. It's a lot of problems, but, a lot of medical calls, a lot of interesting calls, a lot of boring calls, you know? But there's a lot of interesting calls.
Big variety.
Yeah, it's all over the board. You never know what you're gonna see next.
They came to visit me one night.
Yep. And the first thing Mr. Jacobson said is, "You're not gonna drop me, are you?"
Yeah.
That will never go away. Ever.
Drop you or drop you off.
Harold Kraus said about the same thing. "You guys aren't gonna drop me," because he's got about eight stairs down. Yeah. "You're not gonna drop me, are you?" No, we got you. But anyway, other than that, I hope it's a decent presentation. We tried.
So what do you, so as you look at the, as you look at the fire department and the city departments and the council, Matt, do you have any, do you have any thoughts about how they've worked together or things that you would like to potentially see upcoming? Any areas or?
No, I'd just like you guys to get a little more involved in our relief association. So there's no frustrations.
Sean and I actually talked about that. We're gonna sit down with Mr. Schaefer.
And go after it.
Get educated on it and stuff and more. We talked about it a little bit. And I went to the open house, and I'll tell you, if you haven't been over there to see, I was just telling Don earlier, I remember when I was at the thing, I says, "We're, you know, looking for the Jaws." And, you know, you used to have the big bulky and then the generator, and then you plugged it in, and it, and it, and now it's about the size of a oversized sazal.
It runs on a Milwaukee battery. I carry one in my, in my squad.
It's just amazing, the equipment is condensed, it's, works better. It's, I mean, or it works just as well, and it just, I was really impressed with the, I could probably spend another day over there just going through all the new gadgets and gadgets. I'm really excited about the drone.
So when we, when we started, like we, like we talked about when we went down the truck venture.
Tell you what the gadgets.
The first set of Jaws we owned had a pump, hoses, and tools. Showed up at the scene, you had to put all this together, and you go work. Then Engine 19 came along. The pump was now integrated in the truck, and now we had two 75-foot hose reels. The tools were hooked together. Grab your tools, you took off. Now Engine 1, our new truck, shows up. You basically take a Milwaukee battery off of the shelf, click it in, here we go. No more hoses, no more pumps. And they work. They work really good. So it's, it's been a, it's been a venture. You know, I've got, this is my 29th year, and you've seen a lot of change, a lot of change. So what happens when I'm 80 years old? What's happening then? It's just so much, there's so much technology coming. You know, who would ever thought we could have flown a little toy in the sky to find somebody in the woods? Really? That wasn't when I was growing up. You know, I said to Dad, "Let's go play baseball." He said, "Baseball, heck, let's go dig a hole, AKA put in a sewer." So, you know, that's how it was.
So, yes, indeed.
Have you made any real-life applications for the drone yet?
Um, not yet. We, we really 100% haven't implemented it yet, just because it's, it wasn't just a, we thought it was gonna be a small egg to bite into. No, it's, it's really huge. Really huge. We've trained with it. We've used it on looking for hotspots on the Birch Avenue fire. We flew over it just to see if there's any hotspots. We've used it on a wildland, but nothing official. Which is fine.
Yeah.
Just fine. And we'll get there. We'll get there. My goal is like June or July to be running up, you know? Because five pilots truly isn't enough. Because I can't fly it. I got other things to do.
So you have five pilots.
We have five pilots, yes. I think that number needs to be realistically like 10. But then how do you take 21, a staff of 21, and say, "Alright, I have 10 pilots. I know you're a worker, and you're a worker, and you're not such a good worker. You're a observer." Well, maybe that should be my pilot. See what I mean? But you gotta get these people to the scene. So it's just a little more than we thought, but we'll get there. We'll get there. We have bylaws set up for it, and, or SOPs, I should, no bylaws, just SOPs for it. We're getting there.
Thank you, Sean.
Yep, no problem. You guys have a good night.
You too, yep. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is reports. City Administrator, Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor Hydman. Good evening, members of the council. One item I did include in your packet tonight was I had a couple of additional employee anniversaries to recognize. Like to recognize Lonnie Thompson, working at the Pickle Factory for 35 years. That's pretty awesome. Corey Larson in Public Works, five years. Brian Farrell, our Spirits Manager, five years as well. So they also received plaques and thanked them for their service. And we'll have a couple more in a couple of months, and then we'll be caught up, and then we'll continue this on. But we've had a, you know, a large group over the past couple of months to make sure we cover everyone and acknowledge the service and the contribution. So, big thank you to them. Just a couple of other updates. It's year-end time for us in the office, so we're getting ready for our audit. Lots of year-end work with W2s, 1099s, rotating files, all that good stuff. So it's kind of a nice time to purge things and work through some of that organization. So we're, Maggie and I mostly are working on those things. The census is here, it's 2020, and you'll start to see a lot of information coming forward about that from the county level, and we're working at the local level to then share that information out as well. I will actually be setting up a table and a computer in our entryway, because for the first time, you'll be able to complete the census online. And for those initial communications from the Bureau, residents will receive a postcard. It will have an ID that they can use to then complete the census. So we can't officially help them complete it on the computer, but we'll get them set up, and hopefully they can be able to click through some of that. So hopefully that's a service we can provide to be helpful to our residents. But more information will be coming in the next few months. There will be a lot of repeat communications, just to encourage everyone to complete their forms early, so you don't have to worry about doordockers come August. So, and then the presidential primary.
Sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
Wow, my watch wants to talk to me. Sorry about that. The presidential primary is coming up on March 3rd, and I'll share more information about that as well. We had training last night at the county. Debbie Erickson gave us an update on kind of the do's and don'ts and what's happening with that. So you can request absentee ballots if you prefer to not come to the poll place on March 3rd. Hoping for good weather, so we don't have to deal with that as well. And our judges are ready to go in place, and it should be good. That's all I have for updates.
Are those judges paid for by us?
Yes.
I'm just curious.
Yes. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Do we have to do anything for here, provide anybody here to help, say, somebody that's having an issue? Maybe they can't physically type their stuff in or whatever. Can we, do we do that? Are they responsible to bring that person with them? There was an issue with that in Crow Wing County, was it a couple elections ago, where some people were helping others?
Yes.
And then somebody thought they were, and it was, they were just physically, or there was handicap issues, and it was all up for debate, but?
Yes. So as election judges, we have processes in place to ensure that pretty much anything that is done to help a voter, we do in pairs. So that there is impartiality and that we're providing the service to the needs of the voter. So yes, there's, there's that measure. And then we have assisted voting devices available as well for those who perhaps want to listen to what the ballot has to say. They can make their selections audibly or different contrasts on the computer. We have some nice technology now for that.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you, Jenny.
Yes.
Next report is City Attorney. Mr. Pearson, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, thank you. Just three quick update things. Camp Lincoln Road, you know, is something I've been sorting through for some time. We have a hearing coming up that should finalize that in April. You might recall that Nisswa was involved as a class of plaintiffs with the Nelson-Ford lawsuit over the, overcharging on squad cars. That process continues. We continue to get inundated with copies of paperwork. Those attorneys are felling forests with motions and this, that, and the other things. So that thing just kind of percolates along and will for some time, I'm guessing, for probably the next couple of years. Hills Crossing, the easement issue that we had down there that really came back to life with the Gibbons Platte recently. I have communicated with the attorney and one of the owners of that facility. I think I told you earlier that I drafted an easement for him to, for that roadway easement. It took him some time to get back to me. He just did so early this week with some markups to that. So we should have that finalized, I would guess. And I'll probably put that into your packet next meeting, just for a blessing on that. So that's done. There's some issue with encroachment of a retaining wall that got constructed there that goes onto that Gibbons property. But apparently, he's got that squared away with Gibbons somehow. So we'll get more information about that, so, and then we'll have that squared away. And I think that concludes the things that I wanted to bring up tonight, if anybody's got any questions.
Tom, did, did Tom Blommer get you a draft today?
This morning, yep.
Okay. Good. Alright. That's a draft of the new sewer ordinance.
Wow, that looks like a lot of work went into that. That is a meaty document.
It took us a couple months to do it.
We'd like a response by 9:00 tonight.
I'll try to do something by end of date tomorrow. Tom gave me a lot of lead time on that. I appreciate it. We look good, so, yes.
Okay, thank you. Next report would be City Engineer, and Mr. Hamlin is not here this evening, so we'll...
Nope, he's enjoying a nice vacation, and we didn't have anything pressing for tonight, so I didn't ask anyone else to attend, so I think we're good.
Okay, very good. We will move on to new business. Under new business, item E1, resolution to declare declaring sufficiency of petition and setting a public hearing to vacate a portion of Pine Avenue in the plat of the Nisswa Park.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move the resolution as presented by staff.
I'll second that.
Any questions on that? That again is, the plat of Nisswa Park is not a lake park.
Correct, yes, yes.
It is over, near Cullen Lake. It is a plat, a residential plat, not actually a park, just for clarification. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item E2, League of Minnesota Cities Liability Coverage Waive Reform. Recommendation to not waive limits. This comes up every year.
Correct.
And Jenny, go ahead.
This is part of our annual property insurance renewal with the league. They have set limits in place, and the city has the option to waive those limits. We don't do that, so we just have to confirm that that is still the council's wish to not waive the limit for 2020.
Any questions about that? Is not a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we, not waive the limits is recommended by the documents in our, for the city, the liability coverage.
Second.
If I, if you have any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item E3, Crow Wing County Joint Powers Agreement for Inter-City Emergency Mutual Aid. Is this in as a, leave annual or semi-annual?
It's not always annual, but if there's a change made, then we, they do request that updated approval be given by all of the local municipalities. There is one paragraph update, few lines, section 1.2.6. It's just more procedural in nature. Chief Taylor did mention to me it's required and to allow us to respond to other cities to offer assistance and for them to provide assistance to us without assuming liability.
Picky point on the back, under the sign-off page.
Yep.
They have Corwin County Board Chair Rosemary Fratton, she's not the chair.
Yes, you are correct. This was probably sent before that was made, but yes, we'll...
Correct, yeah.
Yep, we'll make that adjustment.
We move to accept the Crow Wing County Joint Powers Agreement for Inter-City Mutual, for Inter-City Emergency Mutual Aid. I'll second that.
Any questions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item E4, City of Pequot Lakes and City of Nisswa Public Works Joint Powers Agreement
This one, there is no change to the agreement that we have with the City of Pequot Lakes. Just provide some clarity on a few small sections of roads that are on our property borders between us and Pequot. They have, the city of Pequot has approved this on their end.
Just a minor point. See, this is for three years.
Yes.
Is there a reason it's three years instead of every year?
I believe if there was a concern, you know, we could certainly address it, but I'm guessing it's just more to not have to go through the process every year if it's not really needed.
I'll move to accept the Public Works Services Joint Agreement between Nisswa and Pequot Lakes.
Second. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item E5.
Mr. Mayor, I move we do not accept the resignation of Donna Karen.
Thank you, Don.
Donna says, "I don't care." What do you?
I'd move we accept the resignation with regret.
I'll second that. And thank you very much.
Your honor, it's been my pleasure. It really has. I've enjoyed your time.
You're a wonderful person, personality, and we have enjoyed very much having you here as a city.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
She did offer to help me with some projects on occasion, so I'll try to keep her around.
I'm gonna shut the door open.
Only 20 hours a week.
Yeah, I know. Just kind of scale it back.
Well, that's great. Anything else? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item E6, Election Judge Pay for 2020. Jenny, you want to?
Yes. So in 2018, our pay for election judges was 1050 an hour. Some of the area cities, we were having conversation about elections, and we got to sharing what our pay was. Most are in the 12 to 15 an hour, and it's, it's very appreciated that we have very good election judges, and so my request is to bring their rate to $12 an hour for 2020.
Okay.
I'd move.
Second.
Second.
Third. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor, question?
Yes.
I know in the past, sometimes we have difficulty in getting enough judges because there have to be so many of one party and so many of another and whatever. How are you looking at it this year? Any problems that you can say?
We are, we are looking very good. I should have, with the exception of the presidential primary being in March, we have a couple of judges who are still gone for the winter, but otherwise, we should have all of the same judges back as in 2018. And we had party ballots in 2018, so we should be in a good spot.
Do you advertise at all?
We don't advertise. Certainly would if, if I had some that were choosing not to come back, or we had some changes. I did reach out to them last fall to get a feel for if they were interested, again, for this upcoming year, just because I knew we were gonna have...
I would just say it could be very contentious, the election this year. And whether, no. It could be very contentious, and the more input we have from the public and the opportunity to be a judge, it might be to our advantage to do that. That's my opinion.
Yes, and certainly for the presidential primary in March, we have to use the judges who were certified in 2018. But for the primary and for the general coming up later this year, we, I can certainly at least put that information out there, so we have interest as well. I, no, I agree that it will, especially for the general, be very, very busy, so we want to be adequately prepared.
They could hire security. Good for Legion, bring their can or their tank up here.
But yes, right now, we're in a really very good spot.
Yeah, it is a busier, this year, the election stuff, we've gone about it. It's wonderful that people, obviously, they have interest in seeing accurate elections and they intend to stay involved.
Yes.
Do you know Shirley Willem could be involved again?
She is, yes. She knows everybody, so...
She does.
She's our greeting.
You ain't gonna get her out of here with dynamite.
Yeah. Dummy. You might be... She's just about your neighbor. Doesn't look too far away. I'll send her over, is that sound? Okay. Moving on, item E7, approve the hire of Jonathan Stainbrook as the city clerk. Jenny, would you?
Yeah, certainly.
Share what you'd like to share about that?
Yes, I look.
As much for the, uh, public as, um, as for the council.
Yep, absolutely. So I, um, I look forward hopefully to, um, to onboarding Jonathan. He has experience, uh, working at both, um, Crow Wing County, um, in the Sheriff's Office and also, um, in Todd County, um, actually as their administrator. And he brings just a wealth of organizational knowledge, understanding of systems and processes, great, great references, um, speaking about his ability to work well with others, to, to, um, you know, create, um, processes and systems, which I think will be very important for the clerk position. And, um, I think he will, I think he will really be a great asset to our group, so I'm looking forward to bringing him on. And, um, he has a degree in political science with some government relations and, uh, he really enjoys bringing technology into the work that he does, um, so I'm, I'm pretty excited about the skills he brings.
Is he from the area?
Um, not originally, but yes, he lives, he does live in the area, yes.
Is he leaving Todd County to come here?
Uh, no, he is not currently there. He was there for a while.
I, I noticed in here that, uh, it was contingent about the background check and everything. It doesn't say anything about a six-month probationary period though. Is that included or not?
Oh, yes, it is, absolutely. That was part of the letter he received, but yes, six months probation, same as all employees per our policy, so yes. And the background check has been completed and everything is good to go.
I'll move, I'll move the request, uh, for council action to hire Jonathan Stainbrook as city clerk as presented by the administrator.
Second. Second by Hall. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry.
Thank you.
Item E8, council discussion regarding council liaison structure. Informational.
So this was something that came up as a part of the organizational appointments and something that I have been tossing around for, really since I started here, so for a couple of years now, and Mayor Hyman and I had a conversation about it prior to our organizational meeting. And what I like to do is just kind of generally give you an idea of what I'm, what I've been thinking about and then I can provide a little more, um, robust, you know, memo or some documentation for the council next month, um, if that would be preferable to the council. But thinking about the, the liaison structure of the city, um, now having an administrator role and wondering if for, for some departments, it's a very active role and for others, it's more of a support role. And looking to create consistency amongst all departments, um, the biggest idea and thought about changing some of the structures really, um, taking those liaisons who are actively participating in a committee and bringing them more into the support role and bringing in more, um, members of the community into those roles, so we have a diverse set of perspectives from the community for those committees and commissions. Um, and then using, hopefully those liaison positions are still very key, um, hopefully having one, um, person still attend meetings to provide that connection to the council so that here, um, you can provide context perhaps in a certain situation that maybe the council would like more information about what was discussed at a committee meeting. But that is, this, what I have seen historically and it has worked well in other communities that have been, um, at previously, and, um, wondering if that would make sense for us now, as we're a couple of years into this new structure, um, from a staffing perspective. And, um, so I wanted to share that with you. Um, certainly open to your feedback. I can provide more details next month, um, but that was something that, um, the mayor and I talked about, kind of initiating the conversation now and, and seeing what the, um, you know, kind of what the, what the feeling is from the council as to whether or not we continue to work through that over the first few months of this year or whether it's something we just leave as is because everyone's happy with it and, um, we revisit it at another time, so.
One thing that I thought was, uh, that, that kind of comes from back when we were looking to hire, um, a city administrator clerk, was that part of it is, was to have a more, um, central operation and that the council was, would look to kind of ease their way back and, and, um, and need more of that support in the, in the, in those areas. And I think, um, you know, that was part of what we had, I think what we were looking for two and a half years ago and so I think it's, uh, I think it's probably time that we have the discussion and, um, see if we want to continue doing that route.
I think the idea is worth talking about, but you need to flesh it out a little bit more, be more specific, so we know exactly what you're talking about.
Certainly in this.
Some of this stuff is in ordinance, so you gotta take a look at that side of it too.
Yes, absolutely, and when you're talking about potentially, um, you know, shifting people from different seats and things like that, you're going to want time to make sure that all of those things are in place before you maybe officially make the change, so, um, certainly, certainly worth looking at in more detail.
And this, the, you know, Jenny has this, and we, we had discussed it, it's on the agenda for the purpose of just bringing up the idea. It's, it's not to make any decisions, I think as Jenny said, I totally agree, for, you know, probably a few months, look to flush it out, figure it out, have some discussion. I don't know if we, how we want to approach it, do we want to have a workshop about it, to talk about it? Do we want Jenny to, uh, put her thoughts and vision together for it and present it to us next month? I think that's part of what this is about tonight is, you know, where do we go? What do we want to do, where do we go?
Well, personally, I don't know if you need to do it at the next meeting, but sometime in the first quarter, come back.
Well, I think, yeah, and then just kind of to echo what you guys have said, that the structure we have now with the department heads who are basically the heads of the committees, report to Jenny anyways, and Jenny is kind of the liaison between the city and us and all that, so it's, it kind of makes sense. If you still want to be, if we still want to be involved in whatever committee, nobody's stopping us from going and doing that, I guess, but.
Yeah, and it's not that, I think, I, I really liked what Jenny had brought up and that is, that it would be, there would be a support role and I, you know, the, one of the things that I think, um, have always thought is that the liaison, a big part of their job is to, you know, sit in on those meetings and see, part of, part of it is to see how it's working, you know? How's it working and is it work, is it working well, is it not working well? What, what areas, can it be improved? And, and then bring that to the council or bring it, first of all, bring it to the administrator and then if there's something that needs to come to council, it'll come to council. So, you know, I would, myself, I would like, and I'm just put it out there, I would like to see like a first blush idea of how it might work next month. If, you know, I, and I don't think there'll be any, I wouldn't anticipate there'd be any decisions made at all, but, um, then take a little time, maybe take the next month to think about it, make notes, whatever, and then probably like about March's meeting, we would have some discussion about it and, you know, start pulling it together and, yeah, maybe by April, May, it's decided. And then there may be a, another period of time, as you indicated Jenny, where, um, we'd need to figure out how to make the transition based on the department and how, you know, how the interactions have been in the last, in the past generally. So it probably would be a, I mean, I could see it being four to six, four to five months and then adjusting that period after that. Mike, you've said something. Don, you've said something. John?
I'd like to see what the final plan is, but I, I think that it's, you know, for the, operationally wise and just for clarity for a chain of command, I think it's a lot better if the department heads realize they need to go to Jenny and not, you know, have an opportunity to, or sidetrack, go to a liaison versus, you know, that kind of thing. So I like the idea of, um, what you, you know, when we did bring her on, the idea was to phase out liaisons. Don's point as well taken, that person is in there by ordinance, so that'll have to be addressed, but there are certain committees that, Mike's point, need, I think council members should be there, I think Public Works is one, but, you know, for example, I can sit in the audience and listen just as well as I can sit up here if they got another person, um, and the same with the EZ. So I, I would welcome seeing the diff, you know, what it looks like. I guess I would just, um, you know, at the latest date, 2021, there aren't anymore, so to speak, you know, if you, so, that's my position.
Sure, and that's another, that's another option. I think what Jenny, well, I know what Jenny and I talked about was not eliminating liaisons, it was just looking at making it, making the structure same in all the departments.
Right.
And so, and then looking at what that would be and, and that's kind of where I've left it with Jenny to have moved it. So I don't, myself, I don't, I, I would entertain whatever ideas come up, but my initial thought in, in our discussion was not eliminating liaisons, it was just creating the same structure in each, in each area with each liaison within that department.
Which I've worked under a liaison system for many years, um, up in Pequot and it just seemed that depending what a department had wanted depended on which council members they went to. And we don't have that, now, they don't have that issue either, they have an administrator, we have an administrator, that's where you go. So, and I know those that I've talked with that have brought things up to me, my first phone call is there. So as long as we, you know, keep that clear chain of command, it's actually easier for a department head to go through administrator because they're here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would be curious as to what other communities in our area, what are they, you know, what are theirs looking for? Just.
I think Pequot got rid of their liaison positions.
Did they?
But I don't, they might be doing something where certain council members, I'm sure, go and sit in those things that are of interest, meaning to them.
I can also include it, just a brief summary of a few of our neighboring cities, how they operate.
Yeah. Anyway, I, I do see, I do see value to liaisons, um, you know, and that, and that, it's from my perspective, that ties into a little bit of, uh, council reports and why I was questioning, do we want to keep them going, because to me, that is a place where each of us would give a report as to what they're seeing and, you know, what additional information we either want to get to the public or to the other council members. And we haven't really done that in the past, as long as I've been involved with the city. So that's why I questioned whether we want to keep that on the, on the agenda.
One of the things you end up with when you work in a, in a government city structure, if you're in city hall, you get a lot of attention. If you're not based in city hall, like the fire department, for example, Public Works here, um, you're kind of out of sight, out of mind. And when you do bring things up, you don't always hear the answer for a long period of time, so those departments that aren't specifically located in city hall sometimes wonder if they're still part of the city, sometimes. I mean, we're smaller, I mean, but, so I don't think that's an issue, but that's one good thing about having a council member that's willing to, you know, stay involved with those groups. I kind of feel that link.
No, for sure, so, yeah. So, you know, I think, you know, I think just Jenny, you hearing a few comments here, I think you've heard, you know, some of the concerns or questions and, you know, and it sounds like there is interest in going forward to explore and, um, so if you, when you have something ready, it's next month, bring, you know, get it on the agenda and we will, you know, we will start down the trail of exploration, see what we want to do.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Old business this evening, we have none. Uh, council reports, um, I received a, I don't know that I brought this up, I don't think I did. Um, my, uh, with all the other things I have going right now, I'm a little scattered with what I've said here and said there and not. Regarding the spirits building and the lease, um, Mr. Schaefer actually called me one day about two weeks ago or something like that and, um, he, Teddy had told him that I was in and that I was looking to get ahold of him, I had left Ted a message, um, and he said, "We don't want you guys to leave." He said, he said, he said, part of what he said was my dad built this building, Harold and, and my dad talked about this building as a place for the spirits and, uh, he said we built the building and with the idea that the spirits would be there and he said we have no thought of doing anything else with the building. He stated that, you know, if the city ever decided it wanted to leave, um, he said that, you know, that would be the case, uh, but from his perspective, um, and Teddy actually had kind of said that too, they kind of picture the spirits being there. And, um, I then asked Ted if he would entertain some discussions on a new lease either that would take effect sometime sooner than our current lease ends or, or, um, a new lease that would start at the end of our current lease, and he said he would like to do that. I asked him when and he said, um, third or fourth quarter of this year, he would like to do that. And part of the reason is they are just giving some consideration to, um, what things they may do with the property there. You know, they've had plans of mini pot, somewhere maybe in the future, a mini mall or building more and he's going on, he's going south for a little bit here and there and, and they're discussing things and so he thought, um, third or fourth quarter of 2020, he would be open to doing that, having those discussions. So that's what I have.
Sounds like we have an opportunity to get our lease forward. If they don't want us to go.
Well, they didn't say that they didn't want to raise the lease, they just said, he just said, they didn't really picture, uh, using the building for something else.
Yeah.
But he didn't say he wanted to double the lease either, so. Um, we'll start down at the left end here. John, do you have any on the council reports, do you have anything you'd like to repair, repair? State about questions for your liaison position.
Um, last, uh, last month, we had that meeting, Sean was here and we discussed the increase of the, from 3,700 to 4,000 for the fire relief. And, um, I, you know, Sean had a lot of questions or we actually barted Sean with a lot of questions and he was feeling pretty peppered. Uh, I've talked to him and he and I and, uh, the other Schaefer, the other young Schaefer are going to meet, we're going to sit down and go through and he's going to show me their, how they've come to the calculations and stuff, starting the educating process. Even Sean admitted he doesn't understand it, so, and then I know. know that Jenny and I have talked about it, and when they have their, uh, she's doing her own research and looking and learning and stuff. And so, we'll be meeting with them when they do their meeting this spring, their relief association meeting. And at that meeting, they will have their representative from the company that does their investing there. So, can learn, you know, and sit down with them and that. So, um, just so we can bring that information back. If there's anyone that doesn't understand it, try and start to understand it a little bit better. Um, so.
I don't think anybody does understand it. So, so, I mean...
I, I'm understanding it better, and I see where they're going from and stuff. And the questions I shot at Sean, he said he had no answer for. He said, "That doesn't..." And I said, "Well," and, and like I assured him, I said, "Just having watched what happened to the state-run police and fire fund, you don't want to fall into that trap." And so, and we talked about it. So, that's why we're going to sit down with, um, the guys that do the books there and then go through the liabilities and the assets. And, you know, I, I explained to him some actuarial things, you know, what's your worst-case scenario? What kind of averages happens? Um, how many people are, are vested already? How many are not vested? All that kind of stuff. So, um, we'll be doing that in the upcoming months.
Is there an opportunity in there either at that time or sometime in there to have them come in and make a presentation with the council so that we can understand it? You know, because, I, I just want to say, I feel for, say, Sean. You know, he's, he's looking to do the best that he can for the fire department, the fire crew. At the same time, he's not getting, he has a full-time job running another business. So, for him to have, have the full understanding and be able to come explain it to us is very difficult.
He has already explained to them that as chief, he will not be here and explain it again. They can come in and explain it and say, "Understand it."
Yeah.
I, I think if, if enough people, if the whole council really wants a deeper explanation and understanding of it, that would be a good time once Jenny's understood it, has their information, that then Jenny and that, uh, the relief association people could present a workshop or something to those people. Or those individuals could sit down with Jenny and, and, and then, and we could do that. Or I could arrange it for a meeting that they're having over there, and people could meet with them, um, to understand it better. It might be easier that way than trying to take time at a council meeting because you really don't have unlimited time. And it, it can get pretty, um, it's like health insurance. I'm, I'm starting to understand it now. I don't know how I'm starting to understand it all, but I am. I'm sorry. I'm understanding where they're coming from and that, um, and how they have it set up and stuff. So, but I'm not in any way, shape, or form educated enough to pass it on to anybody without confusing you worse than you are. How's that?
And so, you know how confused I am. So, thank you. Uh, Jenny, how about if we leave it in your hands then? As this moves along and this, they come to do a presentation and you get some things together, I think it's, myself, I think it's really important for the council to understand that. And the reason that I think it is, is because when they, you know, when the fire chief comes and makes a request for us to have no understanding and then look like we're doubting and questioning them is not our intent.
That was explained to them.
But at the same time, we don't want to see something bad happen. So, a little bit of an understanding would be, I think, would go a long way. And I think would be really helpful. And that's kind of, and, you know, and maybe it could be, maybe they don't come to us. Maybe the, maybe there, there's just an announcement that, "Hey, on this day at this time, there's going to be this meeting. And if you want to know more, you can attend it." And, um, I mean, whatever it might look like, but...
That was explained to Sean, that, in talking with Jenny, and I did discuss it afterwards, but I, that was explained to Sean, that yes, your fund is 110% funded. And no, the city's not responsible for anything over the $4,000 mark. But if that happens, um, and you drop below and you're not able to make the payment, then up to that dollar amount, we do. So, yes, the city does have skin in the game. So, that's, and he understands. But that's why we're going to do this. So, that's all I had.
Thank you. Mike?
I think I'm good. One thought I had during the meeting is, we had that East Clark Lake Road letter. I don't know if anything ever came about with that, the plowing issue.
Just today, actually, I, um, put together, um, a letter that we will be sending to Lake Edward Township because the only documentation I have of this road maintenance agreement was from 2013. And the agreement said that it was only valid for one year. And I don't have any follow-up. I looked in council minutes, and so I'm going to reach out to them to see if they have anything. And if they don't, then I think we need to sit down and have some initial conversations about, are they happy? Are we happy? What do we want to do to move forward? Um, but I, yes, I finally got back to that to say, "When I need to reach out to them and see what they have." Because we don't have anything after that, 2013. So, I will keep you posted.
Well, a lot of things in small, smaller communities get done by, so to speak.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, yeah, thank you for that. Anything new with the park and, uh, any funding? Oh, Mr. Pike was here, right?
Oh, they, for the Gull Lake Trail meeting?
Yeah, for the trail.
Yeah.
What, what was, can you just give us a quick synopsis of what he had positive...
They just came to our, per our request for the Gull Lake Trail, and that was to help explain what we can do better. Bob was there. Uh, can explain to the committee what we could do better for this go-around to maybe get leg up on securing funding for the next time. And, but then they told us that their criteria may be changing, and the point system may be changing on how it gets awarded. So, it's still a lot of questions to be determined.
So, are they, is that funding group, are they thinking that, I mean, a couple, I don't know when it was, a couple, I'm going to say a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago, um, I was at a meeting, Mr. Pike was there, and, and, um, somebody, at least one other person there, and they were presenting this idea and how that legacy thing works. Something they kept stressing was, you know, "We want complete projects. We want complete projects. We want complete projects." At that point in time, that was their, that was one of their biggest criterias. "Don't bring us a part of a project. Bring us a whole project." Because there was talk about, "Wow, this could be a lot of money." It's like, they were like, "Bring us a whole project." So, has, is that changing?
Well, it's...
I mean, just, just to help us out? I mean, to help me out? I mean, is that changing? Or what did, what did he have to, where was, what was he stumbling in about if he, I mean, where was he not on, 100% on board with that thought anymore, if that is the case?
I don't think he was stumbling at all. I think we're frustrated because it's completed a project.
Right.
You would complete a project.
Yeah, yeah. And obviously, you can't, you know, five, six different entities around the lake that are doing this project together can't present the whole thing. If I have one, it would be a...
Yeah, right.
Twenty million dollar project. And so, I don't know that, I was kind of confused. Like, they wanted the whole section, but then when we presented it, we presented it Nisswa and Lake Shore sections. And it's like, well, so it was, there was a couple different things in there, but it's, it's...
Well, when, when he talked about it back then, what I recall wasn't that it was the whole project, East Gull Lake to downtown Nisswa or to the Paul Bunyan Trail. It was like, "Nisswa, don't bring us a part of the trail."
Right.
You know, if you're going to do it, it's got, it's like, what's connected so that it's, and it's the same with, I got the impression, the same with the Lake Shore, don't, and others. It's like, don't go half, well, it was Fairview Township actually was the main one. It was like, they denied Fairview. You looking to...
No.
Somebody?
No, I was, Tom was...
Oh, okay. I don't have eyes in the background.
No, it's all right.
Um, you know, with Fairview, they were like, they wanted Fairview to do the whole project, and they didn't. I'm not sure if they didn't quite have the, their portion of the money, and so they wanted to do less or something. But there was something that, so they were just, Mr. Pike was like, "We want whole projects."
For, for Fairview, it was, uh, in total, $1.2 million project, and that is a lot of money. And I think they initially thought that we would apply in phases just so that it seemed more realistic to wrap our, you know, arms around these projects. But yes, they came back and said, "Send us the whole thing." So, we did the same. Um, I believe Renee said to still move forward and reapply as the whole project. She's the executive director. I forget her title. But, um, she's, um, really, she leads, um, the, the program and the, and it's very key to the funding. Um, unfortunately, they were pretty vague in areas on where we could improve our application, um, trying to ask questions about how we compared with, um, other projects that were funded. So, we could see where can we add a little bit here or there and grab a few extra points. Um, and then, um, it was mentioned that their whole funding criteria might change. And so, that puts a big question mark on how we will approach this next year. Yes. Um, and they have had one meeting, um, so far, and they're supposed to have this new criteria completed before the April 1st application opening. So, we're crossing our fingers a little bit. We're going to see how this goes. Um, we will, I know Matthew and, and Terry Hastings from Lake Shore will be, um, working together to try to do what we can to polish it up a little bit more and, and reapply. But, um...
Is it, was there a sense that it needed to be polished up? Or was there a sense that, "Hey, there's these other projects that have been in the pipeline, that were in the pipeline before this project, and these kind of need to get done first?" Or, I mean, how did they...
It kind of goes on a, every go-around, it's a scoring system. And we came in, what did she say? There are nine projects got funded this year, and we were 11th.
Eleven, yeah, yeah.
So, we were, we missed it by two spots.
Yeah.
So, we, you know, she said, "If we could have a couple more points here and here, like, if our match was, if our match, like, our match is 18%, right? 15%?"
Yeah, it's the middle, the...
Eighteen percent?
Eighteen.
If we had, our, our match would have been up to 20% or something like that, we would have gotten a few more points, and that might have bumped us into the, you know, project-funded range.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, the good news is, just from what I've heard, and I like good news. So, the good news is, those nine projects are now done, are out of the way. So, that opens the door for nine more spots that, or some number of spots that we have the opportunity to move into. So...
And nothing in District 2 got funded. So...
That, is that our district?
Yeah.
But he's, Fairview was funded last year. So, you, you know, you...
What was that?
Fairview Township was funded last year with a big contribution. So, you know, there's a little bit of that too, I think, trying to distribute, um, through different projects. So, yeah. We'll keep working on it.
Those other bills get thrown around, the Metro, and the 50 cent pieces get thrown around the rest of the state. That's why the mission, that group should be centered right here in Nisswa. They should have their home office here. That'd be good for District 2.
Sure.
Okay. Don?
Item that's probably a little shorter than what we've had so far. Uh, if you've been watching what the legislature is doing, there's a couple of, a number of legislators who want to change the state liquor law to allow sales in grocery stores of wine and hard liquor and stuff like that. Whether that will be accomplished this year or not, that's a question mark. But I was thinking, since we have the spirits here and we take at least $200,000 a year from them into our budget, that's a hot-button issue for us if that were to change. I was going to suggest that we have either the mayor or, uh, Jennifer write our area legislator saying, "Well, wait a minute. Here's the situation. We're not so sure that we're in favor of this change of the law," or whatever, however you wanted to name the letter. Put, put them on notice, so to speak. And as a side light to it, as you're looking at the lease on the spirits, if that law were to come into effect, that would allow Schaefer's in his grocery store, the stock, wine and hard liquor. Uh, I would think it'd be a good talking point for lease renegotiation that if that law were to come into effect, that he would not do that in his grocery store, even, even though the law allowed it. It might be a talking point because it could be devastating if he decided to, to do that, uh, for us.
Is there not a municipality ordinance, liquor ordinance that...
The state, state law will override, I believe, anything that we have on the books which would allow that to happen. I'm just trying to look ahead a little bit to see what might happen. Uh, I don't anticipate the law to change this year. I think there's still enough people against it. But unless we say something, let our area legislators know how we feel, it's, it's a major income source for us. And the lease with Schaefer's, if the law were to come into effect, how it would affect the lease, if we're signing up for a lease that's, uh, higher than what we're doing now, and he's our competitor and undercuts us, where does that leave us? Not saying that he would do that. I'm just postulating. So, I'm suggesting a letter either by Jenny or the mayor to area legislators outlining what we think.
I would gladly do that. I would, I would like to see Jenny do that. I would actually like to see each of the council members do that as well as all the citizens, I mean, all the citizens. I mean, really, there's, it doesn't, it doesn't need to just say necessarily just come from a mayor or a administrator. I do think that the, the point of how it would affect us certainly would be...
That's right.
It's a letter legislators know how in general we feel about it. Um, it certainly doesn't hurt.
You could certainly throw in a few numbers, uh, what we're taking out of the spirits right now and what we might lose under the new law if it were passed. Give them a heads up, so to speak.
I appreciate that comment. And oftentimes, um, letters of, um, you know, either for or against proposed legislation are drafted. And so, I, I would venture a guess that there's something out there I could use as a starting point. Um, but I would say that oftentimes, um, to have the entire council, um, show support on something would be impactful, um, to the legislators. Um, so if you would be, um, agreeable to an idea of me bringing something to the council at the next meeting for approval, just to show support as a, as a body for that, I would certainly do that. And I think that's very important.
Please do.
Okay.
I know, John, you talked with, uh, Josh Heitzman now and again.
Mm-hmm.
I do. Uh, I'm sure I'll bring it up to him. I suspect, John, you'll bring it up to him. Um, if you, if you guys don't know Josh, if you haven't talked with him, he's a wonderful representative. Um, he's, uh, very, um, locally-minded and wants to hear from, from us, uh, citizens and cities alike. So, I would encourage that as well. I think something that's important, because I have gotten this from, from Josh, not as a negative, but he's, you know, I've asked him about different things. Like, you know, there's like 2,000 things going on at the, at the state, like, you know, at the, at the, down in the state. And he's like, you know, we all have our committees that we're in. And he's like, "There's committees." He's like, "There's no way I keep track of 2,000 different things going on." So, something that he suggested is, and I didn't, uh, I've just gone myself directly, but he may be able to help out or find out who is on that committee. And it certainly doesn't hurt to send them information directly because they are the ones ultimately responsible. And if the people in that committee don't like the representative that you may send your info to that they send there, it may not, it would, may not have as much traction as if you go straight to the committee people themselves. So, just information. Yeah. But it is important, you know, and, um, it would, it would be nice if there was an option for the, uh, you know, for those communities with municipal, um, businesses that they would be able to have a little more say in how that works in their community. But we will see where it goes. Thank you, Don. Anything else? Okay. Tom, after hearing everything, you give, what do you have for us? Anything?
I forgot to say, I forgot to say during my report, thank you for appointing my firm again this year to do business for the city.
Did we do that? That was a mistake. I thought we were going to.
Every time he does that. He stands me up every day.
Did you see the pro bono line on that?
Thank you. I enjoy my work with all of you and I enjoy my work with staff. You've got tremendous people here. This is, this account, so to speak, is one of the better parts of what I do on a monthly basis. So thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, the announcements and upcoming events are listed here for us. And if there's nothing else, what should we do here?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Go ahead, I was quick.
Get out of here.
All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right, everyone.
You're predictable, but I love it.
Yeah.
Sometimes I am, sometimes.
Yeah, I suppose.